Okay, what is the name?
Bertha Alvarez. Not from the area, but she's at the Grange and all that.
Okay, thank you. We're about to begin.
From the east.
Go ahead.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, July 1st, 2024. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. Commissioner Coronado, would you like to introduce our Pledge of Allegiance student for today?
Yeah. Good morning, everybody. Yes, Commissioner Aguin asked me to introduce the person who's going to say the pledge for us. Mr. Jesús Arreinaga, he's one of our precinct four summer interns. He was born and raised in El Paso and is a senior at UTEP. He's studying political science with a concentration in international relations. Jesús is currently the Recruitment Director and Texas Rising UTEP Chapter, as well as Frontera Fellow with Congresswoman Escobar's office. And after graduating this December, he aspires to go to law school to practice immigration law. So, welcome.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, guys. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice and freedom. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Jesús, and good luck with all your endeavors.
Thank you, Jesús.
Very impressed, thank you.
And now we will receive an invocation by David Marcus.
Welcome, David.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I hope everybody has air conditioning. It's gonna be a hot week and getting hotter. I wanted to thank you for, again, having us here today for your opening messages. I chose a story to tell you. Martin Buber was a 20th century Jewish philosopher and he wrote, he was writing a lot about things that many of us don't even consider. But one of the stories he published was this one. A rabbi is teaching his student the Talmud, and he explains that God created everything in this world to be appreciated, since everything is here to teach us a lesson. The clever student asks, "What lesson can we learn from atheists? Why did God create them?" The rabbi responds, "God created atheists to teach us the most important lesson of them all, the lesson of true compassion." You see, when an atheist performs an act of charity, visits someone who is sick, helps someone who is in need, and cares for the world, he is not doing so because of some religious teaching. He does not believe that God commanded him to perform this act. In fact, he doesn't believe in God itself. So his acts are based on an inner sense of morality and a look at the kindness he can bestow upon others simply by doing a good deed and because he feels it to be right. This means, the rabbi continued, "When someone reaches out to you for help, you should never say, 'Let me pray for you,' or 'I pray for God to help you.' Instead, for this moment, you should become an atheist. Imagine there is no God who can help and say, 'I will be there for you.'" Let me leave you with this statement. May we release ourselves from the need to fit every truth neatly into our own language and may we occasionally forget ourselves long enough to remember each other. Thank you so much.
Thank you, David. Appreciate you being here, thank you.
Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters Salina Salu, Monserad Viasana, and Dario Garcia. Judge, do you have any opening comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, just like to welcome all of you and on behalf of myself and the Commissioners, wishing you extremely safe 4th of July. I know that Judge Anchondo is also very adamant about drinking and driving and he would love to see no fatalities. He'd love to see, like all of us, that we have a safe 4th of July. So, look forward to a great 4th of July, make it very safe and take care of each other. Okay, thank you.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda composed of items 4A through 4AE. We do have a correction for item 4M for the backup. From the Planning and Development Department, they'd like to make a note that there is a 30-day approval timeline rather than the 15 days as set in the background. Are there any items members of the court or public would like to pull for further discussion?
Commissioners?
Item U, please.
Item U, any others?
I don't have mine up. So I'll move to approve. Oh, it's coming up.
Motion by Judge Sanmaniego, second by Commissioner Stout. The voting is open. Commissioner Olguin is absent. Judge?
It's not coming.
Would you like to?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item five is public comment. We do not have speakers signed up.
Could you correct the vote? Because it's not abstained for Commissioner Olguin. And...
There you go.
To be clear, all members present voted aye.
Yes, thank you.
Item number five is public comment. We do not have speakers sign up for regular public comments. We will take no action for item five. Item number six, American Rescue Plan 6A. We do have a correction from the County Administration Department. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the implementation of the El Paso County American Rescue Plan at Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Portfolio. And just for information, we do have several speakers signed up for this item.
Welcome, Jose.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner Rosell Salmeros with County Administration, here to provide an update on a few items that we discussed last week with respect to the county's implementation of the ARPA portfolio. Here on the slide, the same first slide that we had in last week's presentation, we have updated the capital project shortfall. What has been removed, you can see there in yellow is Project 1350, the Office of the Medical Examiner shortfall. That is now being recommended as we continue our capital planning process to be included in the GO bond proposal. And so that amount has been removed from both dollar amounts at the top. And so you can see that over the course of the last several months, the county's identified about nine and a half million dollars in shortfall. We've been able to fund about five million of that from internal projects, but there's still approximately four and a half million that remains. And what is included in that is also the shortfall that has been introduced now for Project 1011, the water and wastewater first-time project in the northwest part of the county. This is a similar slide as to last week. So you can see here that the project is short, over two million dollars. This is coming on some updates that the court will hear from the Planning Department in the executive session. But the concern that the department has voiced is that if the project is not awarded by El Paso Water in the next several weeks, there may be a need to rebid the project and costs may increase significantly. And so in the interest of trying to keep the project moving as well as avoid increasing the shortfall, there's an urgency to identify the funding for this shortfall. So following the discussion the court had last week, we did go to the portfolio and identify the projects that have dollar amounts available, over half a million dollars, as a starting point to determine what were some of the funding opportunities that we may have. There is an updated backup item that allows our AV team to pull up that was added to the agenda after the item was posted. It is this list, but it also includes general status of where projects are. And so you can see, for example, the CIT project has about 1.2 million dollars available. But in working with budget and the Auditor's Office, it's estimated that there'll be about half a million dollars, $600,000 of expenses that are accrued over the end of the calendar year, which would leave us with a projected balance of about half a million dollars. That is to cover the ongoing salaries for the deputies as well as the providers in the project. And so we have updates on those once we can get that on the screen. As the court recalls, the original identified funding source at this time was, made last week, was Project 1150, which is the broadband project. And that comes on the heels of the court awarding approximately $6.2 million to AT&amp;T and Charter Spectrum in the last few months. Economic Development is working on developing those contracts. So there's a balance of approximately 1.8 million in that account that would be available. And so that was the initial recommended funding source. You can see here some of the other projects that have funding available. A lot of them are housed in Economic Development. So a lot of the discussion around the Mission Trail, assistance to small businesses, business retention and expansion, those initiatives have been developed by the Economic Development Department and are actually in the process of being put out for RFP. So we haven't expended a lot of staff resources on developing that. And this is all information for the court to have in terms of where we could potentially fund the shortfall as we were directed to do last week. There is another update that is not necessarily reflected here, but you can see, it's an update to Project 1010, ARP 1010. The water projects were split up between design and construction. And so construction phase of all these projects is 1011. Project 1010 was the funds that we set aside for design. And so working with the Planning Department as late as Friday afternoon, we were able to confirm that that balance of 803,000 is available to go toward the construction of the project. And so that brings the shortfall that the Planning Department is looking for down from the 2 million to 1.2 million dollars. And so from within this list, these are the projects that are available for the court's consideration to consider funding some of these. And again, these are all in different stages. You can see, for example, that 1060 and 1070 are related to the medical costs that the county incurred in responding to the pandemic in our jail. We're coordinating with the Budget and Auditor's Office again because there's reimbursement funds that may or may not be available from the federal government to reimburse the county's general fund to help our financial position. That's the larger discussion associated with those. But there's really the projects that have a lot of room for the funding to be reprogrammed would continue to be the broadband project as well as the other items in Economic Development that you see here, starting with 1140 and then 1160 through 1168. Those economic development initiatives have not yet gone out for RFP. We've been working with them. The Purchasing Department will be bringing those items back to the court for your review and consideration soon. But that really is the area where we could identify the funding for the shortfall. Right? And so for broadband, you see that balance there of almost 8 million. You subtract the awarded amount of 6.2, and that's how we get our balance that's available on that project. Then one final, if we go back to the presentation? Thank you. Another point of discussion last week was the potential partnership that may exist with Borderplex Connect. Borderplex Connect is a nonprofit organization, a 501(c)(3) that's organized under the umbrella of the Community Foundation. It's the evolution of the Digital El Paso Initiative. And their focus is really trying to work on a number of initiatives and projects related to expanding broadband, tapping into the idea being to build coalition for drawing down resources, especially at the federal and state level. We did get a chance to meet with Borderplex Connect twice last week, once to gauge the possible types of projects that might be available. They did indicate that they're looking at evaluating the implementation of not fiber-related projects, but wireless solutions, fixed wireless solutions. We've seen this deployed successfully in the community, both in Canotillo with the Canotillo Connect project that was deployed by the Canotillo Independent School District. And then we've also used that model to deploy the funding that we received through Congresswoman Escobar to assist residents in Fabenza and Torneo through the Cotton Valley Connect initiative. And we had a very good conversation that was information. The first meeting was very informational. We then went and met with Ms. Davidson, our Purchasing Department, our county purchasing agent, to discuss what exactly a relationship could look like with an organization that was a 501(c)(3) outside of a bidding process because we do have some time constraints that I think we're being mindful of. She indicated that there was a possibility of... of making Borderplex Connect a subrecipient and developing a subrecipient agreement with them. That is still pending official internal review from the county attorney's office as well as the county auditor's office. But a subrecipient agreement effectively extends all of the rules and regulations that the county is subject to onto another organization to implement projects associated with, with the county, that the county identifies. And so if there was an eligible use that we identified with Borderplex Connect, in this case providing high-speed internet service, would be likely to determine to be an eligible use, they would be able to deploy that. There are some upcoming threshold deadlines that are of particular interest here. Currently, any project that exceeds $250,000, the organization is required to do a formal request for proposal process or an RFP. And that creates a lot of challenges for organizations that may not have the capacity or familiarity with deploying RFPs to be able to do that. If that agreement existed in place today, Borderplex Connect would be limited to a $250,000 project because they would likely pursue an informal bidding process to just be less cumbersome. It really limits how many homes you can serve. However, it's, Ms. Davidson mentioned that on October 1 in the new fiscal year, the federal government is set to actually raise the threshold from $250,000 to $1 million. And $1 million would now be the, the maximum that an organization could spend with, with, using an informal bidding process. And so it would be very possible for an organization that was a subrecipient like Borderplex Connect to follow a less cumbersome process and be able to implement a project that was of meaningful size with that new higher budget threshold of a million dollars. And so in our conversation with Borderplex Connect, they, they did indicate that there was an interest in partnering with the county. And there was also an interest in keeping that partnership below a million dollars so as to not require this more cumbersome request for proposal process be implemented. We did indicate that this would require extensive coordination with our Purchasing Department. We have seen this through the non, the Notice of Funding Opportunities that we gave with other nonprofit organizations. Where purchasing was a big resource for those organizations in meeting all of the rules and requirements that are set forth under the Code of Federal Regulations, or the CFR. And so there is some, some potential there for, for us to discuss the partnering with Borderplex Connect in an amount not to exceed a million dollars. And so as we go back to what that means for the shortfall that the project is funding, is facing, it's a $2 million shortfall. We have $800,000 available from another, from the, from Project 1010. And so that brings the amount down to 1.2 million. There is still a balance of 1.8 in the broadband project. And so that amount, that 1.2 million could be taken out of that project. It would still leave about $600,000 in that project to work with Borderplex Connect. We could identify funding out of the reserve to increase that as we work with Borderplex Connect to develop a scope of work. Right now, we don't have a good idea of what that project would be. They did mention that they want to identify the areas that the county is funding through our RFP process with AT&amp;T and Charter to see where the areas that were not served under those proposals may be, to then identify how they can deploy a project to serve those areas. And so the, the focus of the AT&amp;T and Charter were largely in the Upper Valley, the East Montana area and the Lower Valley. And so a project somewhere in Central or South Central El Paso would be something likely for Borderplex Connect to pursue. But we need to get through our contracting process with AT&amp;T and Charter so that they know exactly where those areas are so they'd be able to identify what the project would be and then develop the accompanying budget for, for that. So that concludes the, the updated information that we have before the court makes any decisions or we'd ask the court consider hearing the information that the Planning Department has to present in the executive session related to this project as well, so you can have some more information and all awareness about what's causing the shortfall and what our steps ahead may look like. I'm happy to take any questions the court may have.
Commissioner Leo?
Yeah, Jose, I've got a couple of questions. You mentioned Project 1010, the design portion of it. Does that mean we've already completed it or?
Yes, and, and the reason why those funds were encumbered is because the contract for the northwest portion of the, of the project, the contract included two components. One was funded through ARPA and the other one was going to be funded through CPF funding that the Congresswoman Escobar actually identified. But to ensure that the contract moved ahead through our, through our internal process, we did have to encumber ARPA funding for it. Now that we have the CPF project moving along, that, those funds can now be released and put back into the construction of the project.
Okay, good. And, and you did touch on some amount that would come out of the reserve, but you didn't mention the amount.
No, so, so the, that, that's still, I think, a point for the court to consider. My recommendation at this point would be to take the 800,000 from the design and that brings the shortfall down to 1.2 million. Take that 1.2 million from the broadband project. That would leave the broadband project at about, a balance of about 600,000. Let us work with Borderplex Connect to understand what the scope of work and budget that that, that they will have is. And then we will add that, knowing that that is a priority for us to come back and fund the shortfall out of so that we can fund whatever the proposal is from Borderplex Connect, so that we can move the, the El Paso Water Initiative along, still leave a sizable balance in the Borderplex Connect and then let us work through it with them to determine what their budget would be. Because at this point, we don't know whether it'd be a half a million dollar project or a $900,000 project.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Commissioner Coronel?
Thank you, Judge. You know, this is one of the things that, that I think is really, the, the court really needs to seriously consider. This project, Jose, is already shovel-ready. It wants the first-time water.
That's correct.
In the northwest. And if we don't take advantage of this, this is going to be a serious shortfall in the very near future. And that, that may prevent us from doing first-time water for this community. How many homes is this going to affect?
I believe the Planning Department identified approximately 100 homes with first-time water specifically.
Yeah, I think, you know, and the, the broadband project, as, as important as that is, it, it's not ready to go yet, right?
No, we needed a little bit more time to work with Borderplex Connect on developing that. And we think by leaving that amount in, we can demonstrate the commitment, work through and develop that proposal and bring that court, bring that back for your consideration in the next few months.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
You know, I, I think that, you know, with, with, with the availability of these funds being released, I think it's really imperative that we really, that the court really seriously consider doing this project. It's ready to go. It's, it's going to affect us considerably if we don't move forward at this time with it. And, you know, even could prevent us from doing other things because of the amount that it could increase by. And I think that, that can be discussed in closed session. But Andy, you know, both of these projects are really important. But I think, you know, something like first-time water is really essential to this community. This community on itself, through the school district, already put in place the Canotio Connect, the broadband for that area by paying taxes to the school district. So this community already pretty much on its own did that by, by the taxes that they paid. As a matter of fact, that, that initiative was done right before the start, right at the start of the pandemic, where the school district took out maintenance tax notes, the amount of 10 million, to do a various amount of things like laptops and connectivity for all the students right at the beginning of the pandemic. And they put it in maintenance tax notes. So it affected their maintenance and operations. That prevented them from doing other things during the maintenance, for maintenance and operations during the year for several years till this year, just this year, the school district passed the referendum to be able to retire those maintenance tax notes into the INS side of the equation. So that it, it frees up money so that they can, you know, give things like raises to their teachers. So for the last four years, this community has paid taxes for this, you know, Canotio Connect for broadband on its own. The county did, did do a...
Took CARES Act funding and...
Did, did, did some, some, a part of that funding. You know, not a major part, but it did, the, the county did give us, the Canotio District, some funding for that. I think it was 250,000 or?
Yeah, and, and with that, with...
Or about a million dollars or something.
With that, you're, you guys were able to draw down money from the, from the state government.
From the state government as well, yeah. So, but, but a big portion of that was funded by, by the community through their maintenance tax notes. And just this year, they will be retired. As a matter of fact, I think they just sold 100 million of the bonds this past weekend in Chicago. And hopefully, they'll be able to retire those maintenance tax notes to free up their maintenance and operations side. And that, I think that'll free up about 1.2 to 1.3 million a year that could really sorely, sorely need it for teachers and employee salaries. So I really think that, you know, this is something that is really essential, first-time water. I, I mean, both, both broadband services is as well, but I think, you know, first-time water is really a priority, especially when this project's already ready to go. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It is, it is shovel-ready and out to bit, has been awarded, or pending award from El Paso Water.
Yeah. I don't know if there's...
I, I just want to say, I mean, I'm, I, I was the one that brought up the issue with the broadband because when I, when we started looking at the funding for, for ARPA, you know, I voted for $8 million to be spent on broadband because I wanted $8 million to be spent on broadband in this community. There was a study that was done that showed that we, you know, have a lot of money that we need to invest in the community to be able to get to, you know, at least 90% coverage. And many times when it comes to infrastructure investment, my district doesn't get any of that. And, you know, we pay taxes just as, just as much as everybody else. And, and there are community, there are neighborhoods in, in my district and my precinct that are even underserved more, even though they're within the city limits than, than some of the ones that are in, in the unincorporated areas. And so it gave me heartburn. I mean, I 100% agree with you, like, it's shovel-ready, you know? It would cost more later. But I, I just felt like we needed to look at somewhere else to take the money from, except for, you know, not, not the broadband because, you know, that just means that folks in my district may possibly miss out on, on having access to that, to that really important service as well. And, and I had just had a conversation with the, the foundation and their, and the Broadband Connect Division. And, and, you know, they made it very clear that, you know, they need, they need funding to be able to match and, and do some of the projects that they have. And so, you know, I, I hate having to pit these two very needed projects against each other. And I, and I wanted to, you know, get into if there's another way we can fund, fund this stuff. But so, so if we, if, if, if we only have $600,000 and we could go up to a million, that other million's going to have to come out of our reserves or we're going to have to raise taxes to pay for it, which I don't think is fair either because, especially when it comes to ARPA money as well, a lot of that is being spent, especially the infrastructure side of the ARPA money is being spent not in District 2, not, and, and, and I want equity.
Yes, sir. So I think what, what the court could consider in the next several weeks, and so I think the, the problem is that we have this emergent funding need now. And I think in a few months, it'll, that's what it'll take us to develop a scope of work with Borderplex. We'll also, we're also pending some evaluation on the, we can go back to the... Oh, actually, I have it here, excuse me. We're also pending evaluation on Project 1000, Project 1060 and Project 1070. And so we'll just remind the court that we are facing a capital shortfall of about 4 million. So we're, there's, there's a few things at play here. But the CIT project, at this point, the draft analysis leaves a balance of about half a million dollars by the end of the calendar year. And so that could be one funding solution. But we just don't have, I, I don't have that analysis today to tell the court with confidence and, and assure the court that that is what the balance will be. And that, the same holds true for 1060 and 1070. So in a couple of months, we can understand what the proposal that Borderplex Connect has, the cost would be, and then also understand what the availability of funding might be. And so we would leave a balance of approximately 600,000 in that account and then come back and fill it in. So if Borderplex Connect comes back and says, we're at 900,000, then we know we need to identify 300,000. And, you know, Project 1000, the CIT savings could potentially cover that. And then we'll present an updated analysis of what the other shortfall that we're facing might be.
I think down the road, we can certainly find funding for, if, if it's needed extra for the broadband. But it's not an immediate necessity like the first-time water is for, for this project that's ready to go. And it's going to cost us probably several million dollars more if we don't act now.
And in a few, and in a few months, we'll also have the Economic Development projects responded. And so we may get some of those projects back. We may have some savings to sweep there. And then we also have the reserve at 900,000. So I think there is capacity to fund the, the shortfall in the broadband, Commissioner. It's just about giving us a chance to actually figure out how much of that shortfall is. And then, and, you know, the county is an ex officio member to Borderplex Connect. I think we also have an interest in seeing them deploy a project quickly and be successful with that. And a very focused initiative is going to be the way for them to get that big win, to start to develop some of the organizational capacity and credibility that they'll need to continue to draw down funds in the future. So this is a way for us to effectively kind of prime the pump with Borderplex Connect.
Yeah, and I, I mean, you know, the broadband, the broadband infrastructure was a major priority of mine and I would have, I would have liked more put into that. And, but I, I think we all have had to compromise when it came to, when it comes to, you know, the decisions on, on where the spinning was going to go. But, you know, again, the majority of that, that funding that went into the broadband infrastructure went into districts that are not mine, even though I fought very heavily for it and was one of my, one of my priorities because I wanted, you know, the investment in, in my district as well. There are needs in all parts of the county, but it's just sad that I have to be here fighting for my district to, to get some of that funding when I was the one that kind of fought for a large amount to go into that pot in the first place, expecting that we would get something in District 2. So it's, it's a little frustrating that it has to be, these things have to be pitted against each other and...
No, I, I agree with you, Commissioner. But, but the thing is, is your, your constituents have water.
No, I understand, I understand. I mean, I'm not, I'm not...
These people don't have access to water.
I'm not making that argument at all. I mean, I, I, I agree 100% that, that these water projects are, are very, very important. But I, you know, I want to continue to make the point that so much of county infrastructure funding goes to districts that are not, that are not Precinct 2 because we're all within the city limits and, and folks, folks expect that to come from the city. But, you know, these, I mean, access to broadband is, is really important. I mean, if you look at, I mean, the, the, the way things went during the pandemic and, you know, the areas south of I-10 that are some of the poorest and most underserved areas in our county, it's hard, it's hard for me to see that, again, I'm having to make a compromise or, or give up funding that's already very little when it comes to that type of thing in my, in my, in my district. And so, you know, I, I, I understand that we can take the money. We, we hopefully can find the money somewhere else. But it's just very, gives me a lot of heartburn, you know? Again, having advocated so heavily for this stream of funding to be in place and then not getting any and then having to fight for, you know, the crumbs that, that are...
I agree with you, but I tell you, I promise you that I will vote for whatever funding we get, that we can make available. And if not, I know that we've had an increase in our capacity on the COs. And so that might be an avenue, if in fact, we don't have enough. But I think, I think we can work with, with the ARPA funding, with the savings that we might be able to comply with getting all those projects done. I think... I think we can do that. I'd just also remind the court that we voted for giving over $2 million to the city for a project that we haven't identified where that funding's gonna come from. Not in the budget, not in anything. And we voted to go ahead and approve over $2 million for it. For, for something that's not first time water. And I get it, that project is also very important because it's a safety issue, that overpassing the lower valley. But I think this is really important. And having, having that we've identified an area where we can have savings, I think it's, I really think we need to act on this.
Just for the court's awareness on the RFP, we modeled after the, the ARDOF process that the federal government uses. And so, the responses that we got back were heavily focused on the areas outside the city of El Paso. We had one proposal that was within the city and a part of the east side, but the proposal seemed, it was not a high need area and so it was, was recommended for funding. And so, I'm just, just sharing that with, with you all that, that was the, you know, the, the result of the award and the recommendation was a process of who we received responses back to. I think the Borderplex Connect subrecipient tract, if we can work through that with county attorneys and, and legal, give us a good opportunity to, and, excuse me, county attorneys and county auditors, give us a good opportunity to still identify where some of those underserved areas might be, especially in areas like 01, like ZIP codes 01 and 05. I think those are the, some of the still underserved broadband areas that we didn't receive any responses for. And this might give us that opportunity to, to fund that. But we do need a little bit more time to work through them, work through developing a scope of work and a budget with them, and we can bring that back to the court as soon as we have those details.
Before we act on this, we're gonna have a presentation in closed session?
Yes, there is a related item in executive session, the planning department would like to surprise the court.
I don't know if there's any members in the audience that wanna speak on this particular item, if anybody's signed up?
Yes, we do have several speakers signed up.
Your recommendation, executive first, or would you like to hear the?
Usually the court likes to hear from the public, and then that way also they don't have to wait.
I just thought in this case, we'd need more information to understand.
I think the information that you're gonna receive in executive session will be separate from the types of public comments you may received, may receive.
Go ahead.
Okay, our first speaker, we have Eloyso de Avila. And just as a reminder, there is a five-minute time limit. You are being timed.
I'm tempted to, if you're a student of history, Samuel Gompers, when they asked him, what do you want? And he said he wanted more. We're not gonna make your job easier, but we'd like for them to have the wastewater and the, and all that goes with it, and, and water if necessary. And at the same time, we also realize the importance of broadband. But when you get right down to it, you know, basic needs, basic needs. I'm Eloyso de Avila, leader with Episo and Border Interfaith. And we have four lovely ladies who are going to talk about the wastewater and the basic needs that they, one of them is from Far East Montana who already has gotten it, and she can tell you that experience. And then the others are people from the northwest area that can tell you about what their need is currently. In español, puede decirlo.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Mi nombre es Berta Álvarez y pertenezco a Montanavista y a de la Iglesia de San Juan Diego. Vengo de la iglesia. Este, pues yo quería hablar sobre el drenaje que nos acaban de poner. Este, soy de la fase uno y quería decirles que estamos muy contentas por haber obtenido el drenaje porque antes batallábamos mucho porque teníamos las fosas y era terrible porque muchos malos olores, animales, cucarachas y, y este, mosquitos y de todo. Y estaba pues muy mal todo eso. Y ahora con el drenaje pues estamos más felices y contentas porque ahora no batallamos. Este, ahora sí ya tenemos bastante agua y, y este, y el drenaje muy bien, todo. Y este, estamos muy contentas también porque ya va a entrar la segunda fase de la, del, del drenaje y gracias a Dios y estamos muy agradecidas por eso.
Gracias.
Muchas gracias.
Mi nombre es Carmen Maldonado y yo vengo de la comunidad de Mayfair de Canutillo, Texas, y mi dirección es 331 Selva. Yo estoy aquí para pedirles que por favor si nos pueden considerar para el drenaje. Yo tengo viviendo ahí 35 años y como dijo ella, ya son muy malos los olores, hay animales, hay muchos problemas porque ellas son muy viejas y para pagar el mantenimiento a veces nos cuesta 500 dólares. Y nosotros tenemos niños y nietos y no es nada saludable para ellos. Ojalá y esta vez nos puedan ayudar a poner el drenaje porque ya es mucho tiempo y ya es algo muy necesario para nuestras familias. Si lo pueden hacer, les vamos a agradecer todo lo que puedan hacer por nosotros porque ya lo necesitamos urgentemente. Allí, allí hicieron unas casas nuevas y ellos ya tienen todo y son como dos calles de distancia. Y por, yo pienso que también nos pueden ayudar a nosotros a poner el drenaje. Gracias por la ayuda que nos puedan dar.
Gracias, Señor Maldonado.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Isabel Geren. Vivo en el 350 Rusdeva, Canutillo, y pues también estoy aquí, verdad, para pedirles que, que nos ayuden, que nos ayuden con el problema que tenemos. Yo tengo 35 años viviendo ya allí y es liriar con, con las fosas sépticas que son, las fosas sépticas crían, alimentan muchos bichos y afectan mucho la salud, la salud de nuestros niños, la salud de nuestros jóvenes, de nuestras personas mayores. Entonces, ese es el punto principal, verdad, que estamos aquí por la salud, por la salud de nuestra comunidad, que les pedimos, verdad, que nos ayuden, que nos ayuden con este problema que tenemos. Como lo mencionaba mi compañera, están unas casas a, a dos cuadras y ya está la, ya está el drenaje ahí. Entonces, este, no sabemos qué, por qué, y necesitamos, pedimos de verdad, de por favor que nos ayuden para que nosotros y nuestra comunidad pueda gozar de mejor salud. Y aparte pues son los altos costos que también que tenemos para mantener la, las fosas sépticas. Son fosas sépticas muy viejas, de más de 35 años que tenemos allí toda la, la comunidad. Entonces, no creo que ya estén dando el servicio que se debe de dar. Entonces, siempre hay muchos males, malos olores, este, muchos pues como lo mencionaba, bichos que este, que afectan nuestra salud, o pedimos por favor, para la salud de nuestra comunidad, que nos, que nos escuchen con este problema que tenemos. Gracias, gracias por su atención.
Gracias, usted.
Buenos dias, soy María Socorro Pérez. Todos me conocen como Zuki, ahí en San Patricio. Yo soy del área de Chuman State. Nosotros también necesitamos el agua, el drenaje. Gracias a Dios ya nos pusieron el gas y la luz y, y el agua. Entonces, lo que necesitamos es el drenaje. Pero yo ahorita estoy apoyando a esta comunidad que está de selva a la calle MacArthur para que se les pueda ayudar a todas esas familias, porque yo sé que no se puede hacer todo al mismo tiempo. Y pues por parte cesárea ahorita es la más importante. Soy parte de Interfe de la Frontera, El Piso, entonces estoy apoyándolos desde 2005, 2006. Y yo vivo allí en Canutillo desde el 8, desde el 83. So se necesita mucho ese apoyo para esa comunidad. Yo les pido y les agradezco mucho su apoyo para poder salir adelante. Igual que todas las comunidades, necesitamos todos esos servicios que son primordiales. Se les agradezco mucho en nombre de toda la comunidad de Canutillo.
Gracias, gracias por sus comentarios, gracias.
That's all we have, Judge and Commissioners. I, we know your job is extremely difficult. I keep saying it over and over, but that's why you get paid the big bucks.
Dolores, would you like to To make those decisions?
I'm here because you forgot something. So last, last
My wife Dolores.
Yeah, last week we came about the $500,000 that we could not, were not getting for guaranteed income. And then we asked you if it would be, you know, give us an opportunity to think about where that money should go for families. Well, in talking with the families, and we got educated through the meeting last week, really. We, we realized that the 500,000 could go to the, to the west, to the project for water and infrastructure in Canutillo. We'd like to see that money go there if, if, if it's still there, right? Because it was meant for that. We'd like it to go there. That would help the families. Those are basic needs, basic needs. Just like you're saying, Commissioner Stout, broadband is absolutely also a necessity in these days and times. But they don't have the water, they don't have the infi, they don't have the sewer, the drainage that we all have. And so, we would love to see that money at least go into that pot of money and then find the money somewhere. You're very resourceful, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. Thank you, Eloyso.
Those are all the speakers we have signed up for the, for this item.
Judge, would you like to go ahead and move on to item number 7A and then take this item up in executive session?
Yes, okay. Okay, item seven, purchasing, 7A. Approve and authorize the purchase of as-needed access control and surveillance system upgrades for various locations in El Paso County, Texas, using the Texas Region 19 Contract 237452 and 247488 awarded to Pyrocom Systems, Inc., of El Paso, Texas. The county has estimated $4,598,492.78 for upgrades at various locations. Pricing will be verified through price lists and discounts identified through the cooperative contracts. Purchasing approved on June 24, 2024. Funds are available on CP, TN 23B, renovation access control.
Good morning, Commissioners. I apologize, I was having technical difficulties. This item, we're asking the court to approve and authorize an as-needed control and surveillance system upgrade. I want to draw your attention that this appeared before the court on the regular meeting Monday, May 13th, and the court heard and approved it. So this is more of a housekeeping item. What we're asking today is to change the contract numbers. So you'll see that the contract numbers on this item through Region 19 is Contract 237452 and the newly awarded 247488. So we're not asking for approval of new money, but just the same money for these new contracts that were approved. I hope that makes sense. If it doesn't, let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Karen.
We have a motion by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Leon. The voting is open.
Mine's not popping up for some reason, or it's, not giving me the opportunity to vote. Vote, I mean, aye. I vote aye. Thank you.
And Commissioner Alguín?
I'm also aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to go to the item that was pulled from consent for purchasing as well.
Yes.
Item 4U. Approve and authorize the purchase of four ADA compliant vans for the El Paso County, Texas Transit, using the Offices of Management and Enterprise Services Contract SW0797C awarded to Creative Bus Sales, Inc. of Tulsa, Oklahoma, in the amount of $674,611.80. Purchasing approved June 24, 2024. Funding is available on SG, G Rule 23, Cap Outlays.
Thank you.
Yeah, Judge, Commissioners, the only reason I pulled this is really for, for not marketing purposes, but for the people at home to know and for the court to know that the LGC is moving forward. These four, those van-type buses are much needed, they're gonna be put into service. I, I really didn't know how, how important they were until I needed them myself, with the ability to, to load a wheelchair up on those buses and get to your medical appointments downtown or outside the city limits. But that's just for your information and also that we're moving hopefully forward with a, a director that's going to be a part of the LGC and some of the routes that we will have, and also concluding with Route Number 84 that goes services Socorro, which is not participating in the LGC. So, and that's effective January 1st. But Daniel, thank you for being here, and that's the reason that I brought it up, just for publication.
Excellent.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Daniel Marquez, Transportation Engineer, Planning and Development. Just to extend what Commissioner Leon was saying, is that purchasing all these four units is just to continue expanding services for, as part of the county and the LGC. As well, you know, the, Commissioner Leon Echo is just pretty much changes to Route 84 as of January 1st, 2025. The expansion of the ADA paratransit services, which we, we have been working for the last almost years, pretty much just to continue on the public means. We receive a lot of input. Now we are on the final stage for implementation within the next months, and of course, expanding overall services in coordination with the LGC. With that, I'm not sure if there are any particular questions. Of course, I mentioned it's Route 84, the new director, new personnel just for transit related items.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rena, do you have any additional comments?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I do not, Daniel pretty much has summed it up, but I know, I know Commissioner Leon is, and, and everybody, especially the LGC, is very happy with the development and growth that has been made. And so, we do have four vans that we did already receive that will go into use when we implement ADA paratransit services in the next couple of months. And these four more will just be so that as we gradually increase ridership, we have the capacity for those operations.
Thank you, Rena.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alguín, second by Commissioner Leon. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you, Dani.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. And Rena.
Okay, back to item number eight, grant applications. 8A. Approve and authorize the Criminal Justice Coordination Department to apply for the BJAFY24 Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Use Site-Based Program from October 1st, 2024 to September 30th, 2027, in the amount of $1,600,000 with no counting cash match. Contract number 2024047.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Estela with Budget and Finance, the grants section. We are before you to request your approval to submit the FY24 Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Use Application. Funding, funding will be used Funding, funding will be used to fund a program coordinator, subawards with community support organizations, ride-share services, and to help Centro San Vicente. I will now pass it over to Ms. Jones, and she will explain a little bit more.
Thank you. Welcome, Catherine.
Good morning, County Judge, Honorable Commissioners, Catherine Jones, Criminal Justice Director with the Criminal Justice Coordination Department. I am honored to be standing before you today, seeking your support to apply for this grant. As we all know, no one wakes up in the morning and says, today's the day I'm going to become an opioid addict. But until we, as a community and really as a society, start addressing the root causes of substance use, then we're never going to make a dent in this epidemic. We have what I believe is a pretty comprehensive program outlined to begin to make that dent. I cannot take credit for the programming of this grant, however, I can take credit for hiring the man who came up with the programming for this grant. And so I guess kind of by, by default, I will take some credit for the programming here. But I'd like to introduce Christopher Ray, our Senior Justice and Rehabilitation Services Manager, who will discuss the specifics for you.
Thank you, Catherine. Welcome.
Good morning, County Judge and Commissioners. Christopher Ray, Senior Manager of the Criminal Justice Department. This grant, I just want to talk about briefly about what it's going to entail. It's going to be focusing on justice of all individuals who are also dealing with issues of addiction, primarily with opiates, but also individuals in the community. It's not just going to be for them. It'll also be for individuals who don't have access to health care because of the no insurance, things like that, who are also facing opiates addiction. So what will happen is, once they have the need, we're partnering with San Vicente, who can provide not only medical services as well as behavioral, because we know that there's an issue with therapy, where there's a lack of therapy out there for individuals who are suffering from this. So it's going to be a one-stop shop where they can see both types of, types of healthcare. But not only that, the other thing is peer support. It's one of the things that, you know, often people that are closest to the problem have the best solution. So it's partnering with these agencies that provide peer support to be able to walk alongside these individuals who are recovering from addiction. In addition to that, we're also including ride-share. You know, it's great to have bus passes, which we normally do. We give out bus passes, but they still got to walk to those bus pass, bus locations, which could be in the heat, the cold. So we're off, we're looking to get the funding to acquire ride-share, which will be either Uber or Lyft. It'll pick them up directly from the house and take them to the medical facility. And it's going to be strictly for that. And then we're also doing a marketing campaign with those organizations to provide funding to market these resources, because sometimes our community doesn't know that we have this. So it'll be a comprehensive, multifaceted approach to be able to help fight this addiction, because as you guys may know, you know, over the past couple of years, we've had a rise in overdose, overdose deaths. And again, it's alarming to see how much people are actually passing away because of opiates. So this will help to transition people back into recovery and to get them successful in the future. So I can answer any questions if you'd like.
Just, Betsy, any, I don't know if Joel, I mean, is there any, what Joel is doing and sort of bringing together with, with this grant?
So separately, we've been using the opioid settlement funding to invest in some of the projects, such as the Corbin-Sabrano project. We're also funding this position. But any opportunity to apply for and receive additional funding to help, there's not enough, we can't pull enough funding down to do, as Catherine mentioned. I mean, there's just, we can't do enough to get ahead of this.
Yeah. Joel, I didn't realize you were here.
Yeah, no, thank you, Judge, Commissioners, Joel.
Maybe you could sort of bring the whole program together and how the grant fits in.
Yeah, I was excited about this grant. I think it's just another facet of, of some of the investments the county has made, as you, as you remembered last, last year. In fact, one of the fruits of the position you approved last year is Mr. Ray, who's applying for grants like this. That was part of how you spent the opioid settlement funds last year, was his position. And this opens up all kinds of doors to more, to unlock more money for that. Also, the investment into the, the, the medication to reverse opioid overdoses, Narcan. Sorry, I was having a mental block there. Narcan, we've invested in that. We've heard it got a lot of good feedback because it kind of bridged the gap until our community got the, the additional resources that were needed. And so, yes, this is just another component of a, of a huge problem that Mr. Ray so eloquently described in our community. Opioids are a big issue and they're not going away anytime soon. So anything like this, we were, we're excited to participate in the grant. And I don't think this is in any way will obligate the county to long-term expenses down the road. I know we're, we're paying attention to that as well. So we noticed there's no, no match required in this grants.
Thank you, Joel. Appreciate your additional comments. Is Commissioner Leon?
Yes, again, I, I want to echo what's been said also in Ms. Jones, Mr. Ray. It will save a tremendous amount of lives. And also, it's going to impact the healthcare costs that we have, because if they're not helped on the front end, they're going to wind up at UMC and we're going to be shooting up those costs. It's going to be very, as you said, very comprehensive insofar as health. And also the crime area that you didn't mention, it would also touch on that. So all in all, it's a great program, and you're affecting much more than what you've talked about this morning. So I'm for one, I'm very excited, and the best part of this grant is no county match.
I love to hear that phrase.
And one thing that I didn't explain in this grant is we've applied for about five grants, so hopefully we get those in. It's all going to go to your, go, most of it will go towards some type of rehabilitation, therapy. We have a grant that we submitted back in February that was worth a million dollars in just services. So once, if we get those grants, we're going to tie it into a bigger, you know, overall picture, try to touch everybody. Because again, you don't have to be just as involved to have an opiate problem, right? So if we can get people who just can't afford access, get them that help, then we want to use it for the most vulnerable population. And so with all these grants coming in, hopefully we'll be able to just do just that.
Thank you. We really appreciate this.
Do we know if Centro San Vicente has already identified a building, or is that something that they're still looking?
Yeah, so one of the things that we wanted to keep it, because there are, I can't remember the name. It's a federally, what's the?
Federally Qualified Healthcare.
Yes, and they're required to be within a certain distance. I can't remember what it was exactly, but they'll be near the OC Rescue Mission. A lot of these areas, it'll be downtown, so it's pretty much co-located. So if, if they find themselves as well as in, you know, going to the justice system, you know, you're pretty close by and we could get you more help. So that's what we're planning. That's where, it'll be downtown located.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Just, just as a final thought, Chris is right. We, we actually do have a plan. This isn't just a hodgepodge of grants we've been working on. We, we have a plan. And, and if we are fortunate enough to get this grant, to get some of the others that we've applied for, I really believe that we, we are going to make the Commissioners Court and Betsy and Joel proud with some of the things and some of the changes we'll be making in this community.
No doubt. Thank you, Catherine.
You've already made us proud.
Yeah. Prouder, I guess.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stout, second by Commissioner Olgin. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you both. Appreciate it. Thank you, Estela.
This brings us to item nine, executive session. I believe we have a legal memo to read in for item 6A to take into executive session.
We already, the item's already posted in.
It is. I'll just, it's just because it's contract negotiations, I'll just read the memo really quickly for the record. So Judge Commissioners, Eric Rosales Nagagdeon, Assistant County Attorney. So Section 551.0725 of the Texas Government Code, it authorizes you to conduct a closed meeting to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract under negotiations if three conditions are met. Number one, you will vote unanimously. That deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on your position with a third party. Number two, the attorney advising the court issues a determination that it would have a detrimental effect. And number three, a tape recording of the proceedings in closed session is made. So this memo serves to fulfill the requirement described in number two. Assistant County Attorney Eric Morales determined that deliberation in an open meeting concerning business and financial issues relating to a potential amendment to the inter-local and sub-receivable agreement for the provision of first-time water and wastewater services with El Paso Water would have a detrimental effect if discussed in open session. So we're requesting you to have this vote. All deliberations in closed session would be recorded. We're asking the court to direct the clerk to ensure that all proceedings be recorded, as I just said. And then a copy of the memo has been filed. So that would be the motion.
We have a motion by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open. Judge, your vote. Okay, motion carries.
The only other thing I'd mention is this contract negotiation, your closed session item is limited to the contract negotiations to this contract with El Paso Water. If the court has legal questions on this item, this ARPA item that Mr. Landero has presented as a whole, then you, you would want another motion to take it into a closed session for 551.071, which is legal consultation. I don't know if the court wants to do that or not, but I just wanted to let you know that the scope for now is limited to just that potential contract.
I would move to do that just to, out of, you know, make sure that we, that the discussions are proper for both items.
Okay, so we'll have a second motion then, just to also take this item number 6A, the ARPA portfolio item, into executive pursuant to 551.071 of the Texas Government Code for a legal discussion with your attorney. Thank you.
We have a motion by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open. Commissioner Coronado?
Here we go.
Okay, motion carries. And also, before we move into executive session, we are going to be deleting two items. Do you want me to do that? Okay, we're asking for item 9B pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, discuss legal rights and responsibilities regarding litigation styled United States versus Texas, number 2450149, County Attorney's File Number 016523PL, along with its corresponding item 10A, discuss and, and take appropriate action regarding legal rights and responsibilities regarding litigation styled United States versus Texas, number 2450149, County Attorney's File Number 016523PL. Be deleted. And we can have a motion for that. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Olgin, second by Commissioner Leon. The voting is open. Motion carries. Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 9A, C, D, E, and item 6A pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, 551.0725, and 551.074. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.
It's important for your children to say current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are not eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate. Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de la vacuna rutina, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos. Visite EPhealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it. You'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're going to meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're going to get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history. It has culture. You can learn. You can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My God, I'm heading back. Welcome, everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too, and if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate. Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate!
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting. The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My call, I'm heading back. Welcome, everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm heading back. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm heading back. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My call, I'm heading back. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
Go ahead.
Commissioners Court has recommitted to regular open session. Item 10B, discuss and take appropriate action to decrease the financial and operational impact to El Paso County as it pertains to law enforcement actions by the state, including arrests along the El Paso border.
Judge Commissioners Eric Rosales Nogavione, Assistant County Attorney. We're asking for no action for this item, please.
No action for item 10B. Item 6A, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the implementation of the El Paso County American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Portfolio.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Jose Salas Nettles, County Administration. This morning, we are asking for the court to consider the following motion. Approve and authorize a transfer of funding from 1, $803,154.96 ARP Project #1010 First Time Water and Wastewater Design, and 2, $1,232,224.24 ARP Project 1150 Broadband, onto ARP Project #1011 First Time Water and Wastewater Northwest Area, and to further direct staff to work with BorderPlex Connect on a possible sub-recipient agreement for the deployment of additional broadband infrastructure.
I will so move for that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Coronado, second by Commissioner Ogie.
I'll have to make a verbal "aye."
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jose.
That concludes all the items on today's agenda, Judge.
Thank you to our translators, everybody else. Short and sweet, I guess is the best way I can put it. Thank you for production team. Everybody have a great Fourth of July day. Thank you.
Okay, this concludes today's meeting at 11:39 a.m.